Yes, we're recording this, so for your viewing pleasure later on. But before we get into today's afternoon coffee talk, which is a different time, but same kind of great conversation, we're looking ahead to Thursday, and that will be our general membership meeting. I hope you guys can make it to that. We have a really awesome lineup. Bob Berg, bestselling author from the Go Get Her book series. He's got great tips for business, how to approach, I would say, life. It's not about business, but just how to approach people and how that will come back to you in many different ways, enrich your life, enrich your business. In addition to that, we have Dr. Jessica Louts from the National Association of Realtors. She's going to be talking about what is going on data-wise with consumers? What are they looking for? What are they doing? How are they behaving? She's going to distill it down into eight touchpoints for all of you. Great, great info. So she's really sharp. She was with us before in the springtime. Dynamite, dynamite presentation, and she knows her stuff. She's super sharp. And then we will round out the general membership meeting with a presentation by local economist, Dr. Kevin Gillan from Drexel University. And he's going to be telling you what he's seeing on the local side of things, as well as giving his forecast for the future. So a lot of people like to hear what he has to say, and you should be one of those folks that hears that on Thursday. So we're going to be starting at 8:30 in the morning. We have it wrapped up by 11:30. I know it's a long haul. We will be recording stuff, but there's nothing better than doing it in person, because you might have opportunities to go ahead and ask questions of those different presenters. So we hope to see everybody there for that. With that said, we'll now move on to Coffee Talk. Good afternoon, Stephanie. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, Matt. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for joining us this afternoon for your afternoon cup of coffee and a great conversation that we'll have here with Councilmember Derek Green. So, and don't forget to tune in on Thursday, because Bob Berg is one of my favorite authors, and we're just so lucky and thrilled to have him at our annual meeting. So with that, hello, Councilman Derek. There you are. I'm going to pin you here, front and center. How are you today?
I'm doing well, doing well, as some of us are adjusting from the trip to fan from Turkey on Thursday. But it was a great opportunity to kind of see family and friends. As I was saying to Stephanie and Matt earlier, my sister and my brother-in-law were able to come to be with us for Thanksgiving, along with my mother and father, as well as my sister-in-law and her family. So it was a great opportunity to have, you know, family and saw some friends that were in town as well during the holiday weekend. And it's something that, you know, we all were not able to do last year. So it really made the Thanksgiving holiday that more special by having the opportunity to see friends and family that we have not seen in some time. And I think one of the things that Thanksgiving is always a great, great time, but I think it became even that more special because of all the challenges we've been dealing with, with the COVID-19 pandemic.
I agree. I agree. This Thanksgiving was much better than last year. It's starting to feel a little bit normal.
Yes, although we're still using Zoom and Skype and WebEx and GoToMeeting, and I've been on so many different platforms. At one point, I thought I was losing track of all the platforms, then I kept adding another platform for another conference that we couldn't go to in person. Instead, I said, let's use this. This platform was a way to communicate during some virtual conferences that I've attended this year. But it's been, it's been interesting. It's almost to the point where I was thinking I may take on a different career and be, and write a screenplay, maybe a romantic comedy, that I think many of you probably have experienced over the past year. And the title would have been, You're on Mute. And if it was successful, I already had the sequel. You're Still on Mute. But it's something we've learned, languages and technology in ways that we have not experienced, but it's also enabled us to communicate when we were not able to be in person. Although three-dimensional is always better than two-dimensional, but it's through the technology. I like Zoom and Skype and GoToMeeting and some of the other platforms that we're able to still do all the work that we needed to continue to do what we do.
Yeah, I agree. I think in a lot of cases, the Zoom best use of time. I mean, this afternoon, for instance, you know, you can just jump on the computer. Everybody hop in, grab a cup of coffee. You don't have to travel, park. And so, yeah, so in some cases, but I do agree. It's, it's good to be in person, too.
Exactly.
Okay. So you joined us for Coffee Talk in the beginning of the pandemic. That was a while ago. So why don't we just go back a little bit? Tell everybody a little bit about yourself and how you got to City Council and how long you've been a council member?
Okay. So I also, I think I saw my colleague Alan Dunn on here. I'm sure we've got, we've got so used to each other that we're used to the backgrounds that we have in different rooms. So I probably know where he is if he comes on video, but he's probably also multitasking like I often do. So this is my second term as an at-large member of City Council. Prior to working in City Council, see? Just like, just like Alan could predict, there was probably a Virginia banner behind me. So, but good senior Alan, as always. But this is my second term on City Councils, at-large member of City Council. In City Council, I chair the Finance Committee, as well as serve as the Vice Chair of Long Government Committee, and also chair the Council Committee with People for Disabilities and Special Needs, as well as the Aging Committee. In addition, as a member of Council, I serve as Chair of the Gas Commission. Now, the Gas Commission is a regulatory body for to fill up the gas works, which is the largest municipal-owned gas facility in the nation. And through some of my work as a member of City Council, that's led me to be involved in some other organizations that are, that kind of represent, provide some guidance to help me do the work that I do at City Council. For example, I serve on the Board of the National League of Cities, which is an organization made up of mayors, councilmembers, aldermen from cities all around the country. Also, I just wrapped up my term as the past President of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, and that is the Pennsylvania Organization of Cities from all around the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which is also made up of mayors and councilmembers, supervisors, supervisors from throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And each state has a similar organization like the League of Cities. In addition to that role and also being on the Board of National League Cities, I've been involved in some other organizations like the National Black Caucus of Local Like Officials. I'm also the current National President of Democratic Municipal Officials, which is an organization of mayors and councilmembers and aldermen from around, around the country. Prior to coming into City Council, I worked as a staffer to City Council. And before that experience, I worked both in the Law Department as a Deputy City Solicitor and also worked as Assistant District Attorney. And then before coming back to the city of Philadelphia, I was an Assistant Deputy Attorney General. And before law school, I was a small business lender for a bank. Some of you may remember, Meridian Bank, which was a regional bank here in the city. Now, there's been a couple of other iterations in Meridian, but the original Meridian Bank was formed in 1985. And it was the merger of three banks. Central Penn Bank, based in Philadelphia, First National Bank, Alltown, and American Bank. And they came together to form Meridian Bank. And I was a small business lender for Meridian. And prior to joining Meridian as a magistrate, I went to the University of Virginia for college. So that's kind of a work backwards to give some perspective. And I used to say I was a seasoned millennial. And I say that because my dad is 89, and he says he's not a senior citizen. He's a seasoned citizen. So I used to be able to say I'm a seasoned millennial, but my wife convinced me to grow a beard during the pandemic. And the gray hair does not really connect with being a seasoned millennial as much. So we'll see if I decide to go back to my normal mustache and I'm a seasoned millennial again.
It looks great. It looks great. And that's a very impressive background, though. And I know you talked a little bit last time about the, is it the League of Cities with the, yeah. So I thought that was pretty cool. I might want to ask you a couple of questions about that once we get into, you know, some of the topics that we want to talk to. Because it's good to find out where Philadelphia kind of ranks in the nation as far as some of these issues I want to talk about. Affordable housing, taxes, and school and quality of life. So with that, obviously, we're Realtors and real estate is our, our thing. Rental properties have, landlords and tenants have had a rough time these past couple of years. So there's been money coming into the city to help both landlords and tenants. There's talk about rent control. Do you have a position on the rent control? And what are your thoughts on that?
So I am someone, I'm sorry. I'm someone that stated pretty strongly that I did not support rent control. I have a number of friends that are in the city of New York, and I've seen what rent control has done. And really, to be quite honest, it is really a disincentive for people to invest in their properties. As you look at where we've gone from, let's say, from when John Street came in as mayor and we had a neighborhood transformation initiative, and that helped to demolish a number of abandoned properties and also improve some of the dynamic in our neighborhoods, which really helped to spur development, as well as the legislation by former Councilmember Frank Pacheco in creating tenure tax abatement. That really brought about growth in the city of Philadelphia. And when you look at Philadelphia compared to other cities, we get a lot of our tax revenue from both resident and non-resident wage, as well as business income receipt tax. Now, Alan and I are currently both part of the Tax Reform Working Group, and we're looking to try to change some of that mix of our taxes. For example, Boston receives 70% of their taxes in real estate. So we really should be finding ways to get people to invest in properties, not divest properties. And when you have rent control, that really does not provide that type of incentive. And so we need to find ways to promote growth in our city, especially in our multifamily residential. And there's all properties in the city of Philadelphia. And rent control is something that, from my perspective, does not help in that regard. We've had a lot of legislation regarding the relationships between landlords and tenants. And we were already a very, very strong tenant-oriented city. And I can remember from my time as a Deputy City Solicitor, when I used to represent the city's Office of Housing, Community Development, and it was very, at that, even that time, Philadelphia was very strong towards being supportive of tenants. But I think what's been lost on a number of people is the fact that a property owner, in many ways, they are an entrepreneur that's trying to provide another income stream. I know I have friends in the family who own multiple properties or one property. And for some, that duplex, that may be their 401K or 403B. And they may drive a taxi, or they may be a barber, or own a beauty salon, or be a restaurateur, or one other type of profession. And so that investment, that is their retirement. And there has been situations, and we've heard about now the challenge, situations people had during the pandemic, where they lost jobs, were not able to pay their mortgage or rent. And we've often heard it from the tenant side. But there's also property owners who are in that very same situation that because of the pandemic, and I know there's people who are entrepreneurs in the entertainment industry, hospitality industry, and because they could not have people come to their location, or they could not go to a location to perform, they did not have the income they traditionally would have, and were forced, some forced to be in a situation where they own a property, but because of tenant not paying rent, some who did not have the ability to pay, but also some who did have the ability to pay, that put a number of property owners in a very challenging situations and had them become, you know, behind and delinquent on their mortgages. And so I think, you know, we need to have a balanced approach in reference to those who own property and those that lease or rent property for a place to live.
Do you feel the rest of your colleagues in Council understand that? And like you said, it was so tenant-focused. Do you feel like some of them are coming around to seeing both sides? Or?
There's a member of Council's at-large Councilmember that I think doesn't really know a lot about real estate. By name, Alan, not just joking. But no, but I think, I think it's a real challenge. That's why I think organizations like GPR and HABCO is important for people to realize that we have a diverse number of people that own property. I was literally just talking to someone last night, and she was giving me some perspectives on a challenge that she was having, both Alan and I, and with a particular tenant, and the challenge, the difficulties that she was having in reference to maintaining that property, and also that the property, that the tenant was not paying rent, and also knew that the property owner really could not use the historical tools that had been available for those that failed to pay rent. And so that put her in a very challenging financial position, because I think most people, when they think about owning a piece of property, it's part of that kind of American dream to be able to say, I own this parcel, and it's going to provide some, some income to me. But also, from my experience, many of the friends that I know that own property, and I'm thinking of my dad's, other seasoned citizens that own property, and they are like family with their tenants. I'm thinking of a good friend of mine, Dave Roberts, and they have developed relationships with their tenants on a whole host of other issues outside of the landlord-tenant relationship, but in reference to him looking for, thinking about doing his job application, or I just finished college, I'm thinking about should I go back to graduate school, or take other some, or changing jobs. And they really provide that type of mentor, mentee relationship. And what I think also, I think is sometimes lost in some of my colleagues and councils that know, once you get a good tenant, you really want to keep that good tenant. I mean, it takes a time, it's a process. It's not just, you know, just to applicant. I mean, there's a real process in making sure you have a good tenant, because you want to have someone that's going to maintain and value your property as they're in that space. And so that's not something that comes easily. So people tend to want to work with a tenant and have that tenant stay. And if a good tenant decides to leave, that's something they would rather the person not do.
100%, yeah. It's, there's, there's a lot that goes on between the relationship between landlord-tenant, not just month, you know, the rent that's due every month. So is there any legislation or any talks of some of the money that's coming into Philadelphia to help both landlord and tenants? We've had the mayor on Coffee Talk, Anne Faduelin, talking about, you know, some of their ideas that they had for the city, if or when that money comes in. Any thoughts on that?
So, you know, and you may reference to National League Cities. And as a member of the Board and now the Executive Committee, and we spent a lot of time lobbying Congress to now only have that American Rescue Plan dollars include states and cities. But also, we spent a lot of time on lobbying Congress regarding the infrastructure bill. And now the Senate is looking at the most recent bill that passed out of the House, the Build Back Better Act. But the American Rescue Plan, you know, provided $1.4 billion to the city. Now, prior to receiving those dollars, when we first went into the first year of the pandemic, we had a $749 million deficit. Last year, we had a $450 million deficit. So the first deficit, we were able to use now various dollars within general fund and other reserves to address that deficit. And then the American Rescue Act dollars helped us, you know, reduce that $450 million deficit. But that means there's still another, close to $900 million that we should be looking at in reference to a lot of these opportunities. And so, you know, from my perspective, we need to find ways that we could help grow our economy as we come out of this pandemic. Could those be dollars that could be flexible for property owners, who, like I said earlier, entrepreneurs? I think that's something we could look at. You know, we received those dollars in two tranches. We received the first tranche last year. We'll receive the second tranche this year. But I definitely would be open to dollars that are flexible for, you know, various entrepreneurs like property owners and other concepts to help propels. Because I've heard the cry from a number of constituents. I'm thinking of some Zoom calls that we had around this time last year and early part of the budget process this year, where your property owners who traditionally have not weighed in, in the public space, but they came together as a group. And some were members of HABCO, some were not really part or affiliated with any really trade or advocacy group, who were really in a perspective of real concern in reference to just their ability to even maintain a property that they thought they would be used, they could use for their retirement or transfer to their children or other family members. So I'm glad that the mayor and had that conversation. We'll look to see what's going to be included in the budget, which will be presented by the mayor in March.
So when you say you hear from some of your constituents that are these investors, what is the, what is their pain point? What is that?
Well, the, the, the pain point, and, and not, I wouldn't say not as much investors, but more just traditional property owners. The pain point, they say, is that they see a lot, well, a couple of things. One, the question of why there was not income guidelines with some of the assistance that was provided for renters. The fact that they were not really the notification perspective in reference to property owners and tenants. There were some property owners who learned about, you know, some of the rental assistance programs. And, you know, they reached out to their tenants about the program, and some tenants chose not to participate. So here you have a property owner that still has to pay their mortgage.
Right.
And although some mortgage payments may have been some relief, but a lot were saying, well, that's a rental property. That's not your home. Plus, maybe it was a duplex, but that's a secondary property you own. It's not your principal property. So we're not going to buy that related reference mortgage. And because there were not the traditional measures to try to, I say, encourage people to pay rents, you had tenants, some who decided, well, I'm not going to participate in that program, even when the property owner did the research and found out and provided it to the tenant. So I've, I've heard of some of those situations as well. So it really made things challenging for someone. And, and then you add that property owner lost their job due to the pandemic, especially if they were in the hospitality industry or some of the other industries that people were not able to go to, to spend money. And so that caused a lot of challenges for individuals I know in multiple areas.
So what was the result? I mean, is it still going on? Have, have some of the phone calls subsided? Was there a resolve to those issues or?
I, I think some of the phone calls have subsided. We have not been getting that same perspective. I think more and more people are familiar with their rental assist program, are making the applications and getting assistance. But it was also a huge demand. And getting the money out the door also was a delay. So the other thing we've been hearing more recently, I know my office are from tenants that applied for rental assist, you know, some time ago, and they're now just getting through that process of getting approvals and getting the checks out. So those tenants who were trying to pay could pay their properties. So that delay has also been a concern for tenants and also for some property owners who were trying to work with their tenant and knew that the tenant had applied, but is getting through the, the significant number of applications, getting through the process more to get the checks to the tenant for the property.
Okay. Well, at least it's good to hear that some of it's subsiding and the money's starting to filter into the people who need it. So with that Build Back Better plan, some of the monies that are coming, and there's a focus on assistance for first-time homebuyers. Do you, do you have any thoughts on that? Have you heard anything? And what, and I guess this goes back to your whole league of, of mayors throughout the, throughout the country. And where does Philadelphia rank there?
So through, I mean, and we have staff at the National League of Cities that have been very helpful in giving us a kind of assessment on a lot of the legislation as it has come through. Now, the current challenge with Build Back Better is that it got passed to the House. It's now in the Senate. And yesterday, I was listening to some information about that. Majority Leader Schumer was trying to get the legislation passed, you know, by the end of the year. But, you know, with the current makeup of the Senate, they would have to get the support of both Senators Sinema and Manchin. I have not heard from Senator Sinema, but Senator Manchin was, you know, raising some concerns about some aspects of legislation. So the challenge is that once a bill gets out of the House and/or the Senate, it has got to be confirmed in the other body. And so that incurs amendments, and so that can go back and forth. So I'm seeing kind of a general framework, but that may also change. Like, one of the big issues that I know Senator Manchin talked about was family medical leave. And so we'll see if that stays in the bill, or there's another bill, or some other compromise. And then also, as you know, Congress has to deal with some other pressing matters as well before the end of this calendar year. So, and they don't have a lot of session days left. They just came back from Thanksgiving recess yesterday. And I don't remember the exact date when they recessed, but I'm pretty sure it is prior, it's probably the 20th, which is the week of Christmas. But they may continue to push to try to get stuff done that they need to, in reference to keeping the government funded and operating.
So what is the city doing to bring some of those dollars here? What is Philly doing?
Well, the American Rescue Plan, the way that was drafted, and it was similar to the model for community development block rate. So the base, it was based on a formula. And so that's how we were able to see $1.4 billion. And, you know, other cities have been, you know, creative. I would say more creative than Philadelphia in how we use those dollars, especially in reference to economic development and reference to hospitality tourism, attraction to the city, and just other growth. In reference to bringing the dollars back to the city, I think those, there's similar formulas under Build Back Better. But the question is, now, how will the, what will be the end product with the sausage? So there will be, there will be a formula-driven process, and there'll be dollars that come to the city. I think, you know, in reference to how much will come back to the city, I think those, some of those metrics will be based on the formulas that will be used based on census data and other community development block rate formulas that will probably use to build back better. And so we should get a good share of those dollars. But if you take out some of the areas, like some of the conversations with on childcare or paid family medical leave, that may reduce some of the dollars that come back to the city because those, those programs may get pulled out to get a compromise, to get legislation passed.
Is there any talk in Council, like when, when you, you know, talk about some of these dollars coming for affordable housing, how we can address that issue in the city of Philadelphia using some of that money? Do you guys talk about that at all? Or is it mostly focused on, like you said, childcare or?
Well, we've definitely been talking about some of the ideas regarding affordable housing. We have a huge affordable housing issue. We are at historic lows, and I know Matt was giving kind of an overview of some of the upcoming events. And, you know, Kevin Gillen at the Lindy Center at Drexel. I know I've been on panels with him over, over the past year, and he's indicated we are at historic lows for housing units in the city of Philadelphia. And so we need to create more affordable housing opportunities. And I've had, and work closely with representatives of the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia to work on some ideas of how to create more affordable housing units. To work on some ideas of how to create more affordable housing units. And using my banking background, now have some conversations and facilitated some conversations with. Um, some of the lending community um to see if they can offer more flexible products to make it easier for. Developers, especially in the affordable housing space, um to have loan products that. Make it easier and provide better cash flow as they are developing those projects. And you know, with the legislation that was passed. Um, that was well introduced by Council President Clark and then was passed recently, the neighborhood preservation initiative. Um, part of those dollars can also be used for affordable housing. Uh, and that's one of the, you know, ideas and suggestions that we're looking at as we go into twenty twenty two and beyond. So a mix of. Uh, dollars could be allocated American Rescue Plan, using dollars for neighborhood preservation initiative. Buying some ways to make it easier for affordable housing developers to have better cash flow with loan products. They, all of those are part of the conversation. Um, that can help address it for the housing, but ultimately at the end of the day. Um, the private sector is the only entity that could really help us move forward to, to create more affordable housing. Um, now the public sector, we can provide policies and we can, you know, work with. Uh, nonprofit developers, but the city is not a good entity to help build housing. Um, it's an entry that can help promote policy, that can help others that do that work. Uh, and I often say that, you know, the public sector can do some things very well. Uh, especially when you're talking about larger in issues like infrastructure, but there's other things that the private sector does much better. So it's how do we blend that public-private partnership and having policies that come from the city? That can help promote some of the things that we need like affordable housing, which best can be produced in the most efficient. And quickest fashion by the private sector.
I'm glad you brought that up and please forgive me for my ignorance on the land banks. But for me, like I, I hear that and it's just sitting there and I'm a logic, you know, it's, it's sitting there. We need housing. Is there any way the city and like you said, the private sector, where? How can we connect the two? How can we make it purposeful, meaningful for these communities? And address this housing issue? I mean, if it's, I, I don't understand. I apologize. I just, I don't, yeah.
Totally understand. Um, one of the challenges that in our Home World Charter, which is our local constitution. Uh, the city cannot acquire or convey land except by legislation. And so when the land bank was created and the land bank is a private nonprofit corporation. An initial step was let's take all this, all the land owned by city or city related agencies and put it into the land bank. So it can be property owned by the Department of Redevelopment Authority or Department of Public Property. Or the Federal Housing Corporation, which is a private nonprofit created by the city. Um, or they could be property that's allocated that's owned by the Federal Housing Authority. Uh, which is a state authority um created to do work on behalf of the city to implement um housing through the Federal Housing Act. Um, so all those various entities at one time own land. So what happens that land got transferred into um the land bank. But for those properties that were owned by city, if the city wants to um buy additional property. I say vacant property or they want to convey property, that's gotta be approved by um legislation. Um, and when I say legislation, more likely not, that's a resolution. By the district council person where that parcel is located. Because they are the elected official that has the best relationship with those who are most affected by. Any type of change or use of that land. And because of that, that makes it much more difficult to convey land to. End users because you've got to have that legislation approved by the city and that would. More likely not come through that district council person. So that adds a layer that we have here in the city of Philadelphia. That you don't have in other jurisdictions where other cities have created a land bank, they could just convey land into that entity. And then that entity could just transfer. Uh, we have that additional step of where it has to be um approved by. By the city in order to do that. And so having additional step creates that challenge. That we can put some properties in land bank quickly, but others, if it's coming from the city. Makes it more challenging because you've got to go through that process that's dictated by our Home World Charter or our local constitution.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I, well, my feeling was when the land bank was initially started, uh created, there should have been. Um, the additional step to address that issue either by amending charter. So that no properties can go into land bank quicker. Um, and really we should, that was an area that fundamentally should have been addressed when the land bank was created from my perspective. Because I always thought that on the back end, even if you create this private nonprofit controlled by the city. Call the land bank and you put a lot of different property in there. But any property coming to the city, you still have to get the approval of um the city more, more likely will be district council person. So I thought there should have been some type of resolution regarding that issue as they were creating land bank. So you would not have this problem years later.
So do you think there's an opportunity there with um the whole, the shortage of housing, affordable housing? And this available land to create something between the private sector and city council? To build, build affordable housing?
Well, I think whenever there's a crisis, I think there's also an opportunity. And so um the fact that we have um significant amount of need for housing. And we have various parcels. Now some of these parcels are not um. Would not be great for development, but you have a lot who are. And, and you also have a lot of pro- properties that are not. Owned by the public sector or public related agencies that are tied up in um tangled title issues. Um, where you have a, say a husband and wife and then the husband passed and then the wife passed. And it may have not been a will and you have maybe three or four um progeny of husband, wife and. The son lives maybe here in Philadelphia, the daughter may live in Norristown, may have another uh routes or another son lives Baltimore. And one child wants to keep the land in the family name. The other two may want to sell, but because there's no will, there's no direct ownership. And so that's how some of these properties become tax delinquent. Um, and that continues to add to the blight in city of Philadelphia. So there are a lot of properties that are in that very same issue. Uh, and that's why as attorney, I, I, my mother and father have gifted me two various friends for pro bono legal work. Um, just like my sister for pro bono medical diagnosis as, as a physician. But I'm very, uh, and I stressed to a lot of my church members and others, that having a will is very important. Cause you're transferring, transferring asset in a way that you're letting people that you care for know where you want your. Value items, be it a house or other items or assets that you own. And so I know the rest of wills. Um, has been, you know, talking about how do we address the tangled title issue. Uh, they've been working closely with the. Uh, records, um, records commissioner, others who try to raise uh that idea concept. Um, but that's something that needs to be addressed and also could help us address some of these issues, but ultimately. We do need to find a way to have the land bank to be more efficient. And how we can convey property to a, you know, a husband, wife or a young entrepreneur. That wants to develop, that she wants to develop a property, um, and, you know. A new construction or renovate or flip a house and put those properties back in productive use for the next family or generation. To be able to have a place to stay and help us to reduce some of the um housing issue in our city.
Yeah, let's hope we can find something because I think the private sector could be very helpful in that area. So.
And, and let me just say, um, for whatever reason, sometimes people have this very. Um. Negative perspective on um someone taking risk with their own money and making profit off it. Uh, I think that's kind of part of the history of this country and how we've gotten to where we are. Um, but you know, that is another challenge at times we deal with.
Okay, so another thing with um property ownership is taxes.
Hmm.
And um we, we had a conversation with the mayor about the taxes and our um wage tax and how high it was. And how it directly relates to um businesses. So do you think it's time that we change our tax structure? So we're competitive with other cities? Um, you know, I think it's a challenge. Our wage tax people hear that and. Um, even though our real estate taxes are lower, our wage tax is higher. And I, my comment to the mayor was, well, it, it just feels different. You know, when you're paying a real estate tax. It's different because you're paying it based on um, a lot of times it's the schools or, you know. The, the amenities in the area where an income tax, it doesn't matter. You're, you're getting it across the board.
Right.
So it feels different.
Well, I, I definitely believe we should both reduce um wage taxes, both resident and non-resident. As well as the business income receipt tax. Um, I know those are um some perspectives that, you know, Alan and I talked about. Last year during our budget process and now hopefully as we go through this tax reform working group. Um, we'll get to some type of consensus on that, that will be in the FY twenty three budget. Um, but also somebody that we can get nine votes in council to support. Um, as I said earlier, you know, we have a very. Um, complex tax structure. Uh, I learned that firsthand when my wife and I had. A, a retail store uh in, on Germantown Avenue. Um, and things and taxes like gross receipts tax that you pay. Even though you have not taken out your expenses in order to provide the income. So that was very eye opening some years ago when I saw that. Um, and you know, we've got to find ways to. Um, not tax things that are intangible like that and find ways to tax more fixed things now. We have been gradually, there's been reductions in the business income receipt tax and there's been growth on the real estate taxes. Um, and once we go through the um next assessment, um, of real estate properties through the city of Philadelphia. Uh, I anticipate a increase in growth in real estate. We've had a number of properties that have appreciated. Pretty significantly since the last time we've had an assessment. Um, but we also got to make sure that tool we're using for those assessments, like the off the property assessment. Uh, are doing things in an equitable fashion and that's in a concern that I know. Uh, I've had other members of council have had as well. Uh, so I see that shit just starting to occur. Um, but the challenge is. And this is something that, you know, we're trying to work through the tax reform working group is that. There are some people that just fundamentally do not believe that if you reduce taxes, you'll have growth. Because their perspective is that if you reduce taxes, that means you're going to have to cut services. As opposed to the fact that if you reduce taxes, that over time you can get growth by having, you know, new businesses open. Um, businesses who are existing may expand, um, because you don't have, you know, some of the same tax burden. That they would have had if taxes were not produced. You also make the city more attractive for, for um constituents. And I say that the cities that are the leading cities in the nation are those that are in the attraction. And retention business. Um, those are cities that are able to retain constituents. And companies and attract constituents and companies. And having the tax structure that we have makes it challenging. Now granted, we have the third most walkable downtown compared to New York and Chicago. We have the diversity of neighborhoods from Germantown, Brewery Town, Fishtown, um, Riceburg, Oldsburg, Winfield, Overbrook. Um, that is rival, I would say, any city in the nation. Um, it takes. Uh, we're about two hour plane, train, a car ride from about forty percent of the nation. Uh, and we have the largest collection of outstanding colleges and universities in our city and our region. And I don't care what people in Boston say. So we have all these great assets. But it's the tax structure that makes us challenging. And when you see the opportunities that are happening. At the old Sunoco refinery where um Hillco, now HRP are developing the Bellwether District. And they're looking at nineteen thousand jobs, uh, both logistics and life sciences and life sciences. Are jobs that you have to be in a lab, so you can't do that remotely. So that's when you're talking nineteen thousand jobs, that's a real opportunity. For growth in the city, especially in the southwest portion of the, of the city. To the uh development in Navy Yard that Leslie Smallwood, Lewis and Greg Beavs are doing at Mosaic Development Partners. As part of that joint venture with the Ensemble, um, to bring multifamily housing to Navy Yard, which is an area that. Has um various tax incentives and there's a suburban office park right here in our city that already has ten thousand employees. But after five o'clock, they go. But if you have the number of units that they're creating at um the Navy Yard. That helps to create entire retail as well as additional hospitality, um, community in the Navy Yard. And then also the development that Durst is doing for uh Penn's Landing to finally get Penn's Lane developed. And the cap that'll occur on ninety five to allow people to walk from like a Broadway corner right to Penn's Landing. Uh, and make it very similar to what you see in Chicago and Michigan app. So just those three initiatives are major initiatives. That provide great opportunities and potential for the city. But we also have to look at how the tax issue impacts those who want to come to the city of Philadelphia. As well as some of the other issues like the significant um gun violence issues that we're dealing with. The opioid addiction and homelessness and affordable housing crisis and just basic services like wildlife, trash collection. Um, and just, you know, today's inquiry, the, the number of lights being out. So we've got to chew gum and walk at the same time. Uh, and so I think provides some, some great opportunities, but we have to look at our tax structure. And find ways to signal to those in the region, those in the Commonwealth and in the nation. You should be in Philadelphia and we're going to make some changes in our tax policy to attract and retain people to our great city.
I, I agree one hundred percent. Uh, and the opportunity, I mean, we could be on the tipping point. And we have those exact issues that you were talking about and I don't want to minimize them because they are major issues, but they're definitely doable. They're fixable. We can um address them and that's the point. Like you, you just, they have to address like.
Hmm.
The quality of life and um the taxes um in order to attract those people. Do you, in your um talks with the other mayors in the, around the country? Um, how did some of those cities um become those attraction and retention?
So if we were in a room and let's say we're at a National League of Cities meeting and we had someone like a Mike Hancock. Who's the mayor of Denver, Colorado, or Sylvester Turner, who's the mayor of Houston. And let's say we have Brian Roberts and maybe David L. Cohen in, at that table. And Comcast was saying, now we're going to be building this new uh location in Austin, Texas. Uh, I can almost guarantee that Mayor Turner would say, well, you should not be in Austin, you should be in Houston. These are demographic reasons why. This is the economic development opportunities, the educational attainment. This is why you should be in Houston. And then Mayor Hancock would say, well, forget Austin and Houston. You shouldn't even be in Texas. You should be in Denver, Colorado because of A, B and C. We should be doing that same thing um as a city. Um, I don't know if people outside of maybe the greater Philadelphia region even really have a perspective on what's happening at the Sunoco refinery. In reference to that, you know, close to twenty thousand jobs we're talking about in logistics and life sciences. Uh, and I was talking um, um, to a developer contact the other day is doing some work at the Curtis Center. And you know, there are companies that are now looking at leaving Boston. Some have already relocated to Philadelphia because. Um, the cost of doing and having a uh life sciences um location in Boston becomes so expensive. Uh, and even he, he told me there was a um, a researcher was talking to in Scandinavia who was advising a company. That they should come to the city of Philadelphia for um their location because of Penn and Pennovation. And what's happening, um, Drexel, Scooby Gardens and, and, and all of the um. Wexford and all the other opportunities that are happening here right now in Philadelphia. So we should be promoting and marketing that. Um, one of the, you know, concerns I had when we had the DNC, which was not that long ago and we had the RNC a few years before that. In every hotel room, there should have been a brochure about the Navy Yard. Saying CEO, senior vice president of X Y Z company, we're glad you're here for the DNC. But we have this amazing um suburban style office park right here in the city of Philadelphia. That's in a close proximity. In fact, we should have had an opportunity where Navy Yard provided shuttle service for those who want to sign up. In fact, we should have had an opportunity where Navy Yard provided shuttle service for those who want to sign up and just see this location because. The sports complex and Navy Yard are very close proximity. But it's those type of things that we should have really been now presenting and pushing. In reference to marketing the city of Philadelphia and that's something I think we need going forward. Just like we've done it with Visit Philadelphia, which used to be the greatest Philadelphia marketing and tourism committee. And it took me a long time to be able to say that GPTMC acronym and then they changed their name to Visit Philadelphia. But that was something that, you know, when Governor Rendell was mayor, created to market Philadelphia from a hospitality perspective. And you know, pre pandemic, if you were walked outside City Hall, you would hear multiple languages spoken. That, you know, twenty years ago, you would not hear that. That's through the work of Visit Philadelphia and the convention Business Bureau. We need to do the same thing in reference to business opportunities and entrepreneurship for companies to come to the city of Philadelphia and stay in the city of Philadelphia. I mean, a company like Warby Parker, which started by two Penn students. They could leave because they feel they need to go outside of Philadelphia to venture capital. And then they come back with storefront on Wana after they become a much larger entity. We need to keep those companies here in Philadelphia.
Wherever, wherever that PR group is, we would like to get in touch with them. To promote because for us, you know, we have to sell the area too. So it's beneficial to know about these businesses that are coming in. I mean, it's good for homeowners to know, you know, being that we have a shortage. You know, they might be interested to know that there's companies coming, coming into Philadelphia and they'll be looking for housing. So. Well, we are coming up on the top of the hour and I would love to chat longer because I feel like this is a great conversation. We talked about a lot of good stuff. We would love to help out GPAR any, any way we can to, you know, promote Philadelphia. You know, that's what we, what we do. When we have our prospective buyers and they do come from all over. So anything we can do, any information that you have that would be helpful to us to get the word out, we're happy to do.
Well, one, one last thing, and I want to give you some perspective when you said marketing. So there was initiative that started and this is, it started about a year before the pandemic, the Philadelphia Global Identity Partnership. And this was something that was created to really do some of the same things we've done with Visit Philadelphia. But from a business perspective and really help to brand Philadelphia towards the business community. And the challenge was we did all this work and we were about to go to South by Southwest in. The spring of twenty twenty and then of course pandemic hit. So now they're trying to now re reassess and we've been having some meetings. I will try to find some information that I could put in the chat for you.
That would be great.
That gives some information. Hold on one second. Give me a quick, quick second here.
All right, while you're doing that, the one last question that I always like to end on is a positive finish. And once you find that, I'd like to know if you have, you know, if you had a magic wand and you could wave it, what would your hope and? And your good thoughts for the Philadelphia area be?
Hmm, that's, that's a, not a, not a, not a, not an easy.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to think through. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not an easy. Let me, let me, let me say this, I will say this is that. Although we are dealing with some really, really, really challenging issues when you look at. The fact of the level of homicides that we've had, fact that we've had. The the issues of incandoting with homelessness and opioid addiction and when you think about. I found this information for this in chat feature. The the challenge that we've, that we've had in reference to just basic services. In reference to trash collection and it, not a streetlights, I didn't even talk about some of the issues I'm addressing at city council through. School district with asbestos and mold and other challenges. It can be very depressing. Very challenging in reference to like. The city feels like there's no real direction. But I, I guess the point of hope that I would provide is that, you know, in nineteen ninety, we had five homicides. Around that same time, you know, when Governor Rendell was elected mayor and gets wanted in ninety two. The city was on the verge of bankruptcy. So even with all of these real challenging issues and we're dealing with. A global pandemic that just when we think we're getting a little better, we have the Delta variant. And then we think getting a little better, now you have the Omicron variant. So but even with all of those challenges, when you look to the history of both the city and this country, we have gotten through. Similar challenge before and we can do that again. We had the pandemic, you know, nineteen eighteen, we had the fact that we had five homicides and then we're able to get to a much significantly lower number of homicides. The fact that the city wasn't a very effective seat, but then prior to the pandemic, we were doing phenomenally well in reference to the growth of the city. And reference to Center City to the point that I'm sure you've had clients, customers and others who used to live in. The suburbs and decide they want to be in downtown because of a sense of vibrancy. And I've had friends that born in Philadelphia that went to UVA with me or went to University of Chicago or went to Harvard with other. Schools and came back for Thanksgiving and said, wow, the city is just different, there's different energy. So I guess the point of hope that I will say that even with all these challenges. That we have gotten through these situations in the past and we can continue to do so going forward. And just getting people to remind of that fact. And that we can continue to push forward as long as we kind of keep working together and trying to promote growth in our city and for our city.
I think those are great words to end on. So agree with you one hundred percent again. Well, thank you again for joining us. Keep in touch with us if there's anything GPAR can do to help with some of these initiatives. You know, with the affordable housing, promoting the city, we're, we're here and we're happy to help. So.
Definitely appreciate that. I will also put my email in the chat feature and know I. Now, pre pandemic, I would get out of City Hall as much as possible because you can't really see what's happening in our city. So I try to do that a lot now. I can do that by way of Zoom and Skype. But now hopefully we have to do more and more of that, but you know, hold us accountable. So if you see something that I'm working on that you think is not a good idea. Feel free to send me an email and let us know how you feel because we need to have that type of engagement and conversation about policy. And that's the only way we're going to move Philadelphia forward.
All right, you might get some emails and you might get some phone calls.
I try to respond. I'm not as quick as Mark's, well, Mark's was like the fastest email, I mean, he responds quicker than anybody. But I try to respond to emails the same day or the next day. So I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate that and we appreciate you spending time with us today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day and Matt, it's, it's over to you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you to our members for tuning in. Sure.
Yeah.
I just want to recognize Councilman Green, he's been a great ally on council. He gets all these issues, been a great friend, very supportive. He understands how we can grow the economy. He is, he gets it. So we should give him as much support as we possibly can. He's really. Great friend, great ally and he's been great. So thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it.
There we go. We have a love fest on city council. Who thought that was possible? I guess it all depends upon the company you invite. But on that note, again, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Councilman Dom as well. And to all of our members, remember Thursday, we would love to see you there eight thirty in the morning. It's a great lineup. If you're looking to go ahead and improve your business, learn about what's going on. And get some forecast into twenty twenty two. The place to be is our general membership meeting Thursday morning, eight thirty. Hope to see you all there. Until then, take care, have a great evening. See you all. Take care.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Bye bye.